We'll call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of Tuesday, September 7th. We'll note that all commissioners are present. First item of business for your consideration is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing done, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, the motion carries. The next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Hearing done, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion, the second. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We're going to move to Tab 4, the non timetable agenda. And the first item we have there is the 2011 annual appropriations ordinance, or better known as the budget, and Mrs. Johnson will present that.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. The budget for 2011 shows no use of cash for the general fund. There are two enterprise funds that require use of cash. They're the wastewater fund and the solid waste fund. The use of cash is related to one-time capital costs that include the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and the landfill master plan. In our property tax revenue, we have included $100,000 increase for new construction coming on the tax roll, but no increase for existing properties. The pay scale and classification system has been reworked to reflect our organizational chart, which is classified as laborer, operator, senior operator, chief operator, manager, and director. This new classification will need civil service approval, which is scheduled for their September 17th meeting. There is also a funding increase of approximately $500,000 across all departments to our defined benefit retirement plans. This is the amount that was requested by our actuary. We have also projected a 20% increase in health insurance costs as of July 1st. Some additional highlights, the new staff positions are city planner and a code enforcement officer, which were previously approved to start in 2010, and a firefighter position as of July 1st, 2011. We have admin fee transfers from our enterprise funds to our general fund. Those have increased from approximately 4% of total revenue to 8%. State law allows a transfer of up to 20%, and the citywide average is around 15%. In total, our general fund budget has increased 15.7% over 2010, with 4% coming from the pension increase, 4% from payroll changes and additional staff, and 5% for capital requests. In our 2011 fee schedule, which is included in the proposed budget, but will require a separate motion for approval, we have new fees that are proposed, which are a license transfer fee and issuance fee for alcohol-related licenses, and a plan review fee in our engineering department. The rate increases include annual alcohol-related licenses, including the commercial on and off sale license, is increasing from $2,100 to $2,845 annually. Our streetlight utility is increasing $1. Our water usage rate is increasing 10 cents per thousand gallons. And our solid waste collection rates increased 3% for both residential and commercial accounts. The average utility bill should increase approximately $2.33 per month. Those are some of the major points in the 2011 budget and the fee schedule. Are there any questions?
Comments or questions by commissioners? I can't recall. Do we, besides the planner, do we have anything in the budget for planning study at all as a project?
In our engineering department? No.
No. Okay. You know, I think that's, you know, that's a possibility that we may have to either add now or amend as we get into 2011. I suspect we're going to want to consider getting some outside help in terms of planning. I think we should be aware of that, and we're probably talking between $100 and $200,000 in terms of the cost to do something like that.
For more of a master plan of everything, or?
Well, along that direction. I don't know that it would be a total master plan, but with the way development is happening here, I think it's going to be beyond the scope of even just a planner to work on this by him or herself. But I mean, I think that's a possibility. We could be looking at doing that.
And we do have a public hearing scheduled for the next commission meeting, and the second reading wouldn't take place until the first week in October.
Right.
Could make that change.
We could make that change, or if we don't feel comfortable making it now, I mean, it can be amended in later, but I'm just raising that possibility. Mr. Kessel.
President Johnson commissioned. I actually had an item on my report tonight, not present, but I was going to speak to this very subject, so I'm very glad to hear you bring that up. Done a lot of work in the last few days regarding this very issue, regarding planning. With our transportation study, or corridor study that could be completed, we've already talked to engineering firms about doing a, establishing a growth area, and then trying to determine what the infrastructure requirements would be to develop such a growth area. These are all planning expenses. The initial expense for simply establishing a growth area and determining what infrastructure would be required and how our existing infrastructure would be able to be used, the initial estimate was over $120,000. There are state DOT dollars to do a transportation study. Those are often matching dollars. So if we were able to partner with the state, we would have additional fees for that kind of a study. I also believe that with the amount of infrastructure and requirements that it is going to take us to build out existing infrastructure and new, it might behoove us to hire a legislative consultant to line up, to seek out and line up grants for these types of studies. The Department of Commerce has a planning grant that they are willing to extend if asked for, and funds are available and it's appropriate, and there are other areas of opportunity. But certainly, any amount of planning that's done is going to be an expensive proposition. I should say, an expensive investment in our community. So I certainly support the addition of dollars in our budget for 2011 in the planning room.
Can you tell us more about a legislative consultant? What that means? Is that more like a public affairs type function?
Yeah, that's exactly kind of what it is. They have, certain engineering firms in our state have developed government affairs divisions, and their job is to, to quote the individual I spoke to with, to tee up the project, so to speak. They do this at the federal level and at the state level. They are well aware of the contacts, the timing, the wordsmithing that goes into applications, and they would be the ones to leverage those contacts to make sure that we were well aware of the timeframes in which phone calls would be advantageous, when applications would need to be made. Our current staff is very, very busy, and to have that kind of guidance would be very helpful, both at the legislative level locally and at the federal level.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions about the budget that's presented here?
One point of clarification. Mrs. Johnson, did you state that the solid waste for residential, solid waste collection for residential is going to be increased by this year?
Yes, it'll be increased 3%.
But there's no indication on the sheet I have that it's going to happen 2011? Or does it happen 2010?
2011. On the fee schedule?
Yeah.
The residential, oh, she doesn't have it next to it, but on page six, the residential rate right now is $11, and it will be going up to $11.33.
You don't show the current rate and the new rate side by side. I think that's the issue. And I think in the future, if we could do that, that would be very helpful, if you could show the present rate and then the rate that is changing. Other comments, questions?
Of the rationale for the increase for residential solid waste collection is what?
We are carrying a negative cash balance in our solid waste right now. Our expenses have continued to rise, and we actually are, the first increase we made in several years was in 2010. And so we had to add an additional increase to try to cover just the costs of everything's increase.
That's my concern, is because 2010 there was an increase, now we're looking for another one a year later.
Right.
But we're looking at a budgetal neutral standpoint on this. We're only trying to recoup what our actual costs are, right?
Correct.
Commissioner Landblum, if I may. We've added well over 400 accounts to our solid waste pickup service. We've done so without adding staff or equipment. So the staff and the equipment that we have has simply ran extended hours. That's not a long-term scenario that can be sustained, and so we have to look at alternatives to operating, using overtime and such. One of those may be changing a laborer position to a, to an operator position. The difference between the two is one has a CDL license and the other doesn't. In order to operate those machines, you have to have a CDL license. So I believe we're being very prudent in the manner in which we're adding on the accounts, and yet the expenses have risen, but we believe we've done so in an efficient manner.
Those expenses are also, I mean, the waste, solid waste fund is subject to the same increases to the pension contributions that the general fund is, and the 20% health insurance cost increases. And I suspect those two are driving much of the proposed increase for 2011.
I have one question that's really a fee question, too, but the budget overall, I have no questions. I think we did a good job two, three weeks ago, or whenever we met, going through that, and I think we're in good shape. But what about liquor license application? Did you explain that, and I missed it, or I thought there was going to be an increase there that?
There is. As I think Ms. Johnson pointed out, there would be about a $700 increase to the licenses themselves. I believe that's across the board, if I'm not mistaken, to each license class. And then there would be a change in, an addition of two fees. The first one would be any new license issued, there'd be an issuance fee for the ones that aren't limited, of course, equal to whatever the annual fee is.
And that's what I'm asking about. It's that initial application fee. But we're not showing that here?
It is, on page one, under the alcohol-related licenses, at the last two are both new additions, and the amount is just shown as annual renewal fee.
Sorry. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, before we go to our timetable, I'd like to act on Item A and B if we could. If you don't have any questions on Item A, are you prepared to act on the first reading of the budget ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for passage of first reading. Ordinance number?
1390.
1390, for the 2011 annual budget.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion, then. Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Then Mrs. Johnson presented the fee schedule. That is Item B. Do you have any other comments or questions on the fee schedule? And I think there's a resolution behind the fee schedule. Mr. Coling, do you have a resolution number on that?
This would be Resolution 34-2010.
34?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion regarding the fee schedule?
Point of clarification. Is this, do we go through a reading on the fee schedule, or is it final action right now?
This would be final action now.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of Resolution 34-2010, 2011 fee schedule.
Okay. We have the motion, we have the second discussion. There's no discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go to the timetable agenda. The first item we have there is regarding a special use permit. Mr. Soren, can you introduce that?
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. City Commissioners, we did receive a request from Mrs. Herring to operate a home occupation at her home located at 680 South Main. She is planning to open up a dog grooming facility within her home. She did mention at planning and zoning that she would not be boarding any of the animals outside. They would be in the home through the operation of grooming them until they were picked up. Planning and zoning has reviewed this and is recommending approval of her home occupation, or the special use permit for her home occupation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soren. So I understand this, this is not really a hearing item, but I would invite anyone who would like to speak to this issue to do so. If there's anyone that would like to speak to the issue, you can come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is there anybody that'd like to speak? Okay, if no one would like to speak, any comments, questions here by commissioners regarding this item?
Mr. Chairman, have the, do the neighbors typically get notified on special use permits?
Yes, any of these, we would notify 300-foot radius of the property of the request. So everyone within 300 feet was notified of the request.
And no reaction?
And we didn't hear anything back on this one.
Any other comments or questions? Would there be a motion then regarding this item?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Move to approve the request.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I would second it.
We have a motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, then we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go down, back to the non timetable agenda item. Item C there is a amendment to the defined contribution retirement plan. This would be first reading of the ordinance. Mr. Coling, is this your item to introduce?
It is. Mr. President, Commissioners, the proposed ordinance before you makes a change to the city's defined contribution retirement plan. This is not the pension plan that we've talked about in the past, but this is for new employees or employees that came into employment after 2006 with the city. They are on a defined contribution plan similar to a 401K. The change that is made in this ordinance provides that part-time employees, regular part-time employees may participate in the defined contribution plan. Previously, they have been excluded except for a couple of particular exceptions. What this proposed ordinance does is take those exceptions out and just provide that any regular part-time employee is eligible to participate in the defined contribution plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coling. You've heard his introduction. Comments or questions? Okay, this is first reading. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment regarding this proposed ordinance? If so, you can step to the podium. Anybody from the public? It's known from the public. Is there a motion then regarding this item?
Mr. President, I'll move for approval of the first reading. Ordinance number must be 1391.
Correct.
We have the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item D here is a proclamation. Mr. Kessel, did you want to say anything about this proclamation?
Other than I think I need to live by it more than I do today. It is, just to give a brief summary, it is encouraging the, it's encouraging families to sit and have supper with their families, hopefully to increase that relationship and to therefore have those children stay away from illegal or prescription drugs, and to promote, and nicotine and alcohol, I guess. And the National Center on Addiction and Substance Abuse is the ones who are bringing forth the proclamation itself.
Okay, thank you. I'll read it. Whereas the use of illegal and prescription drugs and the abuse of alcohol and nicotine constitute the greatest threats to the well-being of America's children, whereas 15 years of surveys conducted by the National Center on Addiction and Substance Abuse, also known as CASA, at Columbia University have consistently found that the more often children and teenagers eat dinner with their families, the less likely they are to smoke, drink, and use illegal drugs. Whereas frequent family dining is associated with lower rates of teen smoking, drinking, illegal drug use, and prescription drug abuse. Whereas a correlation between frequent family dinners and reduced risk for teen substance abuse is well documented. Whereas parents who are engaged in their children's lives through such activities as frequent family dinners are less likely to have children who abuse substances. Whereas family dinners have long constituted a substantial pillar of family life in America. Now therefore, I, Dennis W. Johnson, City Commission President, do hereby proclaim the fourth Monday of every September as Family Day, a day to eat dinner with your children, and urge all citizens to recognize and participate in its observance. So I will sign the proclamation and pass it on to the city administrator to date it and attest my signature. And with that, we will go back to the timetable agenda. We have a 540, and that is a special use permit. And Mr. Soren will let you introduce that item.
We received a request from Big K Industries to construct a duplex in an R1 zone or a single-family area. The location is 1082 12th Street East. It's the east half of Lot 5 and all of Lot 6. Across the street to the north from this property is R1. As you can see, I did print you a map of the area. It's R2 across the street to the north, R1 all the way on the east, west, and south. To the south is a church, is currently in that location. Planning and zoning did review this and is recommending approval of the special use for the duplex at this location. With that, we did receive, I think, three, two letters of opposition, and I received a phone call in opposition of this as well. Planning and zoning, when they looked at this, and you can see how the lots lay out, I believe the statement that was made was, we're not increasing the amount of density that could be there by adding a duplex at that location, because on, as you can see on the map, that's split with a single-family house to the west. Therefore, there's not a house on that location. I believe so that was part of their understanding or thought process when they did approve or recommend approval of the request. But with that, they are recommending approval of a special use application or permit for a duplex on these two lots.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soren. Again, this is not usually a public hearing item, but will certainly take public comments. And at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this issue. If so, you can just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Good evening. I'm Kenny Koslowski. I own the two lots that are right to the east of there. These lots are narrow and long. I do believe a duplex in this area would be kind of crammed in there. Right now, there are all new homes on our side of the block, and there is only one lot left open. And my wife and I would really like to see a single-dwelling home in there. There is a, oh, he had it drawn out on how they were going to set it in there. There's an eight-foot easement on each side of my property. And how they have it is, is they have it six feet from property line, which, that they would have to go to that eight feet. They could not go to the six feet. And I just believe that, you know, my home runs north and south, and with that close to the property line in the back, I mean, right off my deck, I could, the walls are going to be right there, you know? And I believe with a smaller, single-dwelling home, it would, it would be spaced in there better.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Koslowski.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Donna Prowse, and I own the lot, I share the lot, I guess, of Lot 5. I'm located at 1054 12th Street East, and I do have some concerns with a duplex going up right next to us. We purchased our lot a few years ago with the understanding that it was going to be a single-zoned residency. And I am concerned with the growth that Dickinson is about to see. I think we need to start preparing the city to look nice and look beautiful, and to put a duplex right in the middle of, you know, as Kenny just stated, of single homes, I don't think is the best approach. I think we need to use the areas that are specifically zoned for duplexes and apartments and keep that building in that area. I also worry about the property value. When you put a duplex or housing that isn't at the same value, that it can bring down the value of others in that area.
Ms. Prowse, for the, just for the record, you're the lot immediately to the west of this lot, right?
Right. I share, we're in Lots 4, and then we have half of Lot 5. And as Kenny pointed out, too, it is a very narrow lot, and you can probably see on the map, there's kind of a slant or a triangle. So to put a duplex in there, it is going to look goofy. And the other thing is, is that we do have our shop right there, so we do have, we take up pretty much our whole property line, so we do have a building at the end of our lot as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm David Steinbach. I live at 1192 11th Avenue East, which is directly east of Mr. Koslowski's lots. My living room window faces directly in that direction. I always realized that someday that would probably be built, but if they'd squeeze a duplex into a lot and a half- a duplex into a lot and a half, they're basically going to have to pave the whole front of that lot with the driveway. Basically, with them trying to squeeze it in there, and the utility easement on the east side, you know, there will be no lawn or trees or anything, like they require all the rest of the homes to have. So I don't believe it's good for the neighborhood. It takes away from the purpose of zoning in the first place, and to ignore the concerns of the neighbors that are already there, I think would be rather disrespectful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steinbach. Anybody else wish to comment?
Good evening, Mr. President, City Commissioners. Denver Kitson, BK Industries, just want to, I know Kenny's comment about the six-feet easement, obviously, this is a brainstorm idea. We would have to follow any codes, easements, laws that would make our setbacks, you know, work for the property. And I am sensitive to the thoughts and of the people that came up here and just talked to you here. Everybody's on a little bit of edge with new building and, you know, so I understand that, but also know that there are many duplexes in that area. There is a church to the south of that area. I don't know how well a single-family home would look in that area with a large backyard. So the design of this duplex would be in the works. I did show a potential blueprint plan for it and a layout of the plot plan. Things would be changed and workable, too, making it look nice, so.
Thank you. Mr. President. Mr. Kitson? Mr. Kitson, would you, yeah, would you take a question?
Yes.
What's, what would be the square footage of the duplex?
The duplex, each duplex would be around 1,500 square feet.
Well, 3,000 outside dimensions are going to...
That's correct.
3,000 square feet.
Anywhere from 1,250 to 1,500. That's our, that was our goal.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Anybody else wish to comment? All right, well, thank you. Comments and questions now by city commissioners?
Mr. President. Mr. Soren, could you tell me, directly to the north there, even though it's zoned R2, those two units that are facing 12th Street there, are those single-family?
Directly across the street, I believe they are.
Block, yeah, it'd be Block 1 and Block 7, or Lot 1, Lot 7?
Yeah, I believe those are single-family.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Mr. Soren, if this, this is going to be a special use permit if it's approved, but does the tract that remains, that lot and a half, have the frontage and square footage that would meet R2 zoning requirements for a duplex?
Yes.
Do you understand what I'm asking? When this was brought up at planning and zoning, there was a lot of discussion about it. It was kind of teetering for a while. I think the two things that made planning and zoning approve the request were, number one, the fact that the dimensional requirements are there for an R2 situation. But secondly, that if you look at all of Lot, Block 3, the overall density would end up to be what R1 would have provided. Granted, some of the houses straddle property lines and some of that kind of thing, but the overall density in Block 3 still meets an R1 requirement. But it was a tough call at planning and zoning, too.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other comments?
Mr. President?
Yes.
If the individuals that own Lot 8 and Lot 4, what are the square footages of your home?
My main floor is 1,840 up, and I have 1,840 down.
And you're Lot 8, correct?
I am Lot 8 and 7.
8 and 7.
I'm right in the middle of them.
1,800 square feet?
Yep.
What about Lot 4?
I apologize, I don't have the exact dimensions. We're about 3,100 square feet up and down.
3,800.
I do want to point out one more thing that I forgot to mention when I was up here. I think that duplexes look nice when they're appropriately situated at the end of a block, but again, to the point of to stick it in between two homes, I just don't think that's an appropriate place.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I guess my comment would be that since this was originally zoned R1, if there wasn't anyone that had an issue with changing it to R2, it might be an easier decision. But when it's originally zoned R1 and you have opposition with it, then I think you stay with the original zoning intention, is just my personal opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Altman.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Mr. Kitson and the owners of the last two lots that were up, your last comment was that if it's appropriately placed, is that something that's still available for Mr. Kitson to get approval with, you guys?
I don't know. It would, I mean...
We've locked it out a couple times and stuff like that. It's worked. We're happy to play the lot.
Excuse me. If... We're going to have a discussion. You do have to come to the mic because the system won't pick you up.
Sorry. Cheryl Costa-Luckey, I'm Kenny Costa-Luckey's wife, and we own the two large lots. In having our family over in this area, we, you know, we placed our home the way we did because of the way that it's laid out. It looks like a bean shape and stuff like that, and it's very irregular shaped and stuff. When we went and we zoned ours out and we looked for where all of the stakes are, there is no way you can fit one in there because from point A to point B, where the snow is going to come, where are they going to put the snow? Are they going to put it on our lot? They're going to put it on Prowse's lot? There's just, I mean, there, it's so irregular in the shaping of it. I mean, we stepped it out this way, we stepped it out that way. There's just no way that you can fit in there unless you put it totally kitty-cornered or tilted somehow, and it's going to look awkward. We put ours the way we did so it would look like the rest of the houses around the block, and so did everyone else in the neighborhood. You know, I mean, it's a family-zoned area, and that's what we like. And we looked at how much the concrete would be, how much, you know, the footing would be, you know, we did the sidewalks, you know, all of us neighbors kind of looked at it all. There's no way you can squeeze them in. You know, even with the aggressed windows, if you put those in, you've got to take that into consideration. How are they going to bring in fencing into the back? How are they going to bring trees into the back? You know, if they change things, there's no way. They'll have to come across my lot or through her fence to come onto our area. I don't know if you need to see it, but it's a really irregular-shaped lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lambrough.
I've got a question for Mrs. Prowse.
You should have sat in the front row.
Are you the original owner?
Yes.
Is there a reason that you didn't buy the whole lot and you just only bought half the lot?
We purchased it from somebody who owned just Lot 4 and part of Lot 5, so we bought it as that. At one point in time, we had even talked about Costa-Luckey's and us possibly purchasing the other lot and a half that was for sale and, you know, sharing that, and we decided not to do that at that time. But that's how we purchased it, was Lot 4 and part of 5 altogether.
Wouldn't make it awful easy if you've come together and purchased that.
I know. And it was a lot less expensive along, you know, three years ago.
No doubt.
Originally, when these lots came up for sale and the city owned them, Mr. Thomas bought these three lots that are in there now. It is Lot 4, 5, and 6. He looked at them as they were too narrow then to sell those individual lots. He split them into two. That's why they're Lot 4, half of Lot 5, half of Lot 5, and Lot 6. So the resale was better.
Were they replanted, then?
I do believe so. Because they came over and staked them in the lot and a half. But I think he was going to have a hard time getting rid of them also, because, I mean, he bought them for what the city was asking, which was pennies on the dollar at that time. And he turned around and then he did pretty well on them.
I had a chance to visit the area last night, and no matter if you put a single-family or a duplex in here, it's going to be difficult to configure it.
The front is really narrow. I mean, but it, they're long.
Mm-hmm.
But the front is narrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Well, Mr. Coling, I think we can either have a motion here to approve the special use permit or deny it. I think it's pretty straightforward, isn't it?
Pretty straightforward, yes. Mr. President.
Mr. Lambrough.
I move that we deny the special use permit application from Denver BK Industries.
The motion is to deny. Is there a second?
I would second it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Any discussion?
I believe that, Mr. President, I believe that protecting the integrity of the one R1 district, plus the fact that homes across the street are also single-family residents, I just think that the integrity of that area should be protected.
Thank you, Mr. Lambrough. Anybody else wish to comment?
I wish we would have had these comments at planning and zoning. I have a hunch that this may have turned out differently. We didn't have the input at planning and zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other comments? That's probably why it is a two-step process, because there gets to be time sometimes for the decisions to, you know, sink in and people get a chance to talk about it and respond. So it's probably good that there is a two-step process. I think it works very well in the legislature that some bills that pass the House after they're better understood don't pass the Senate and vice versa, so it's kind of a good process. Other comments? If not, we're going to vote. Just to remind everybody, the motion is to deny. We'll begin with Mr. Lambrough.
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. The special use permit is denied. It's 6 o'clock. We have a timetable agenda item there, and this has to do with a final plat for the North Industries addition. And Mr. Soren, we'll let you introduce that item also.
Thank you, President Johnson. This is a plat, 163 acres approximately on the north side of Dickinson. And we've been working on this for quite some time. The development is a proposed, there's general commercial, some limited industrial, general industrial, and some R2 proposed zoning on it. The majority of it is industrial in nature. As we've gone through the process, we've looked at a lot of different issues that are related to this plat, one of them being Highway 22. The zoning along that is proposed to be general commercial, which was at our request to try and keep that development a little softer, I guess, to, you know, than the heavy industrial stuff along the highway, and then phasing back into some of the heavier industrial as you go east. And then there's an R2 buffer before you get into some of the rural residential or single-family R1 developments that we could see to the east of this. Planning and zoning's had several meetings on this, has reviewed it, and is recommending approval of this to the City Commission. This is also the plat that has had a lot of discussion about annexation that goes along with it, that'll be in front of you tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soren. This does carry with it a public, public hearing, I believe, or is that a public hearing for the second part of this? Mr. Coling.
Mr. President, the public hearing is only required for the rezoning. It's not required for the resolution on plat approval.
Okay, so, but there will be an opportunity for people to comment then shortly. Okay. All right, you've heard Mr. Soren and Mr. Coling. Comments or questions by commissioners regarding this proposed resolution? Mr. Lambrough.
I noticed that we've gone to two blocks of R2. If I recall, the original were R3. Is this a compromise or a change in the original plat, or preliminary plat, on the east side there?
I don't know if it was a compromise as much as, you know, R3 is typically a heavier density. The size of the lots, I think, when looked at, seemed to be more fitting to an R2 development than possibly an R3 in nature. It also creates a better buffer between a potential R1-type zoned area and the industrial site. So I think through the process, that's what we came up with as being the best fit for that.
Okay, was there any degree of discussion regarding putting the R2s across the street from the limited industrial area?
No, there was none. On the west side of that road that you're referring to?
Right, the west side of that road. I was just wondering if there's a conflict, would be a conflict of use or any conflicts by using the road as just a buffer between a residential and industrial area? Just curious if there's a discussion...
There was no discussion to that.
Other comments or questions?
Also, if I may, was there any discussion about the drainage within that 163 acres as being a problem, or which way it would be handled?
There's a, there's a lot of discussion regarding drainage. One of the notes on the plat itself, that Block 4, Lot 1, that R2 bigger lot, you'll notice that is dedicated as a stormwater facility to handle the drainage of the subdivision and the lands to the north that drain into this to help mediate that water. So yes, that was talked about through this process.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. President, I think we have to have some discussion about how the infrastructure's going to be developed here. It's a unique development in Dickinson because of its size and because of the land use requested in the plat, 160 acres of basically industrial. You know, we haven't seen anything like this for a long time, maybe never. I think that, and it'll be great addition to Dickinson, but I'm concerned about getting this infrastructure built. We've had some discussion in the past, and I think we all feel that we do want this to be a development, that it's an urban development, municipal development, with water, sewer, and streets. And I'm hesitant to appro- water, sewer, and streets. And I'm hesitant to approve this without some kind of financial backing being required to know that we're going to get that infrastructure done. We've done this in the last two or three plats we've seen in the ETA. And granted, none of them are the size of this one. So I think that, you know, it's probably not a one-size-fits-all situation. But I'm very concerned that there could be lots sold, especially if it's a number of lots sold, before infrastructure is installed. And right now, we have no guarantee that that won't happen.
What are the ramifications if lots are sold before infrastructure is built?
I think it makes it very difficult to get the cooperation, if you will, to get that infrastructure built. If we have a number of property owners up there, now we're going to probably rely on some kind of improvement district or impact fee situation. And we're going to have to deal with a number of possibly reluctant participants in that activity. Now, I know what I'm saying, you know, puts requirements on a developer that a developer might not want to see. So I don't know how the rest of me feel. But I think we want to have the assurances as a city that the infrastructure will be built. If there's another way to do that, I'm very open to that. This is not an unusual request. Other cities do the same thing and require that some kind of financial guarantee be done. I think also that we, as a city, need to step out of the box a little bit in how we view the infrastructure development up here. And I think that perhaps there needs to be some consideration. We're looking at a development here that can be tremendous economic development for our community. We can put a lot of businesses in here that will be the basis for a lot of jobs in our city. So we've got to recognize that, too. And we want that. I want that. But that doesn't negate what I think is a risk about the infrastructure.
Is your reference to financial guarantee through performance bond?
That's one way to do it. It's really the only way I know how to do it.
The other thing, Mr. President, that hasn't been mentioned is the word annexation yet, along with this particular plat.
Well, I think that's the plan, that, you know, we would start the annexation process here after dealing with this issue. And it has been mentioned, I mean, virtually every time we've talked about this particular development, we've talked about annexation right along with it. Mr. Kessel.
President Johnson, Commissioner, maybe I can summarize briefly. Part of where we're at in terms of staff having multiple discussions with the property owner and as it's being presented to you today. I think Commissioner Jackson's points are valid. The current intent is that a developer's agreement would be signed between the City of Dickinson and the landowners. That developer's agreement would require that when a lot is sold, that city infrastructure would be extended to that lot, or lots, depending on how many are sold at one time, that the developer would have access to the city's current impact fee program. Later tonight, we'll talk about an augmentation of that program. And if the City Commission is open to that, this developer could be our first applicant potentially for that program. The guarantee that Commissioner Jackson is looking for isn't necessarily there. What we try to do is use our impact fee program to pace development, to limit development, and within that, like I said, state that when a lot is sold, the landowner would sell that land with the intent of putting in, or the city would require that the infrastructure be extended to that lot. So could lots be sold and create confusion? Yes, that could happen. But there was some thought process into the process that went into development of this area. The City of Fargo, just as a point of interest, requires a letter of credit. They do so at 30% of the development area. The developer is required to put up a letter of credit for 30% of the engineer's estimate of the infrastructure required. The City of Bismarck does it a little differently. They require a CD. I don't know all of the details on what they require in terms of how much of the CD, if it's for all of the infrastructure in the proposed development or portions of that. But there's many ways in which you can arrive at where Commissioner Jackson would propose tonight. But I thought it'd be in your best interest to know where we're at in terms of the discussions that we've had with the developer from the staff level.
And with the annexation, we have some assurances as far as to what level it'll be developed. It'll have to be developed to city standards. So we have that cleared. And I guess just looking at it from the development side and looking at what you're bringing up, I would say with a tract this big and encompassing, unless you're able to sell some of your lots to generate the money to do the infrastructure to meet the guidelines, boy, your hands would really be tied as a developer. And certainly, we don't want to be left holding the bag if something goes awry. But at the same time, if we're going with annexation, we have set the level of what the development needs to be. I think you also have to let the developer be able to sell the lots to get the money to do the developing so that it can be done to the standards that you want it to be done to.
Thank you, Mr. Altman. Mr. Jackson?
I agree. And that's why the guarantee, I think, has to come into play. I don't think, you know, and I don't know what the numbers are, I don't think that this guarantee has to be 100% of what the potential infrastructure costs are. I think that wouldn't be reasonable.
Are you the developer? Just give us one more question, then. We'll let you comment, and we'll get you into the discussion. Mr. Coling, are you familiar with this possible developer's agreement?
I am, yes.
Can you further explain that and what that may do to maybe alleviate some of Commissioner Jackson's concerns? Or does it at all?
It's an agreement under development. It's not something that we formalized at this point. And I think Mr. Kessel outlined the basic of it, that it would require a developer, when lots are sold, to provide for the development of infrastructure, something that we would set up to run with the land. It would be binding upon future property owners, that they would be bound by that, as well as a condition of purchasing the property. It doesn't provide the financial backing unless you would want it to include that. At this point, as we have drafted it, it doesn't provide for a financial guarantee that the infrastructure be developed. It does put that obligation on the landowner, on the purchasing landowner, that he develop that as we envisioned it in conjunction with the development impact fee that we'll be discussing later tonight.
Is this an issue that you've discussed with the developer, or is he hearing it tonight for the first time?
We've met a couple of times with the developer. I don't recall if we discussed that at our meeting.
All right. Well, why don't we have you come to the podium now, and we'll hear your comments and...
Mr. President and City Commissioners, I'll try to keep my emotions out of this, but it's hard to after six months of this process.
Can you identify yours?
My name is Ron Knutson. I'm an anesthesiologist from Bismarck. I just got to give you just a little bit of brief history of where I've came from and where we hope to go. And I grew up in Williston, and I mentioned that at the Planning and Zoning Committee. My wife and I came back to Bismarck after residency in 1989, joined the Heart and Lung Clinic, and I've been in Bismarck as an anesthesiologist for 20 years. I now practice part-time out here in Dickinson, covering vacations. And I've come out here a number of times over the last 20 years. And so I'm kind of familiar with the town, and I've looked at this piece of property for probably most of that 20 years. I do a lot of developing in Bismarck, mainly residential. We've done the development called Boulder Ridge Development, Eagle Crest Development. And we also are doing a development on the water called Whispering Bay Development. It's a $9 million bay development in the south side of Bismarck. So we've done a lot of residential. We've also done light industrial, and we've also done commercial. So I have a little bit of experience, but it's not my main area of interest. I wish the engineer was here, maybe he could speak to some of this. But I'll tell you, the process started way last spring when we bought the land. We talked to the city, and at that point, we had, came up with an agreement that we would do a needed rural industrial development. And we started through that process. Halfway through the process, somebody came up with that word "annexation," which, to me, at 160 acres, is almost mind-boggling, because we probably haven't annexed 160 acres in Dickinson in the last 20 years combined. So for me, the first thing I think about as a developer is, holy macro, how do you expect to put in infrastructure into this, sell lots when they can go farther outside of town and buy land cheaper and build? And they're not going to want to pay this kind of price. But we worked out some kind of an agreement that says, if we can do this in a staged process and work out some kind of an agreement with the city, maybe we can do this, and it can be a win-win situation for the people buying the land, the people in Dickinson who want these jobs to stay here, and of course, the developer, which is me, and of course, my son. And so the point is, this is something that's totally new. Now, we're talking about a bonding issue. I know that land costs a lot of money. To do the infrastructure costs a lot of money. I've done this a lot of times in Bismarck in 20 years. I've never had a problem yet. And I really didn't want to have this annexed to the city, but I kind of felt like the gun is held to the head. And in order to get this needed development, we come up with this, we got to be all annexed. There's 33 acres south of me that just was in zoned and commercial and didn't have to be annexed. So I'm actually north of that development. So it's a little bit frustrating to have this be as prolonged as it has, because we've lost people in Dickinson who want to build some small and some possibly major employers in the city. And this is a needed project. And I didn't see the reason to have to annex it at all. There's rural areas, including one I'm doing in Bismarck, that has ability to use a septic system and rural water, and it's doing fine. And the city was agreeable to that, because it was, again, a business that employed a lot of people, and it worked for everybody. So with that history, I'll answer any questions. But I guess I'm willing to work with the city, but it's got to be some kind of a reasonable request. And I appreciate, you know, your comments that, you know, this is all a front-end loaded project. And to put, to buy the land and to do all this on the come and then put up a bond, it's, it would be pretty, pretty hard to do all of that. But I guess I hope my history speaks for itself, and I'll answer any questions.
Well, thank you for your comments. Do any commissioners have questions for Mr. Knutson? The development agreement that Mr. Kessel and Mr. Coling were referring to, I think I heard you say when you were seated in the audience, this is the first time you've really...
No, we've talked about an agreement that where we would possibly bring in sewer and water to a limited area, and then we could work out some kind of deal where we pay for half of it, the city puts up a bond for the other half, and so that is done as kind of a joint effort, just like they do now in the residential developments, no different than anybody else that's doing developments in town, only it's geared toward the industrial side.
Any other comments, questions?
I mean, I would appreciate keeping this outside the city until a point which time there's enough density that someday maybe enough people will want to annex it to the city. But I'm willing to understand what the issues are and that you'd like to have it all on the city limits. It makes it easier, but it makes it a little bit tougher for us, too, because of having to spend possibly a million-plus dollars bringing in sewer and water into the area and trying to sell against people who are buying land cheaper somewhere else. There is a big user that wants to be in this area, and I don't know if they're still available or still interested, or if they went to another city. But this has been delayed, it seemed like, throughout the entire summer, and it's just getting old.
Mr. Jackson, did you...
I have any questions for Mr. Knutson, but I'd like to go back to Mr. Coling, because I heard you just say something that I don't think I've heard before. Could you expand on, what were you talking about, water and sewer and some kind of an agreement running with the land?
Basically, what we have talked about is putting together an agreement the developer would sign, stating that if lots are sold, that the developer would provide for the development of that necessary infrastructure, water, streets, and sewer. And he would do that in conjunction with the development impact fee that the city's operated for many number of years. It would be something that would be intended to bind future purchasers of that property, so that if Mr. Knutson, say, would sell off a lot, that purchaser would be bound by that agreement as well, that in the event that the property was developed, he would have to provide for city water, city sewer, and streets designed to city standards.
So what I'm hearing you say is that you could bind that purchaser to an impact fee situation?
That would be the intent of the agreement, yes.
Well, if that's possible, it sounds to me like that satisfies our concerns. I've never heard about this. And if that's doable, if that's something that we can assure ourselves with the infrastructure...
Well, I guess it goes back to some of the developers' comments, too. We have set up a lot of hoops to jump through to make sure that this development molds with the city and where we want it to head. And again, if you can't let the developer sell the lots to have the money to develop, then it's not going to happen. And I see in this situation where we're not going to get left holding the bag, because we do have the impact fees, we do have the annexation. We've set the playing level for how we want this development to be. I think it's time that we step back and let the development happen now that we've set the bar where we want it.
Another concern, though, would be that we'd be addressing lots out in the middle, and we have to make sure that this is a phased development, you know, that it runs contiguous to our services. But then, at the same time, the developer has access to those impact fees more than once, based on those type of phased developments. And we just went through this last meeting with the Diamond Acres, where they came in and are going to be phasing their development, requesting funds from the Impact Fund to address that as they go along. So I think we have to assure ourselves that this thing takes, the development takes place in an orderly manner, that's contiguous to our services. Or else, we're going to have vacant lots, trying to figure out who's going to run the curb and gutter and the streets passed there to address that particular lot in the middle.
Mr. President, City Commissioners, could I just address that a little bit? We've had really pretty good discussion in the last couple of weeks at a couple of meetings with Sean and Matt. And we've both looked at this, and we want it to work for everybody. So when we do this development, we've got to work with the city to bring in infrastructure, which is well over a half a mile, if not a mile, away from this project. That's why it was stunning to us to hear that we wanted to annex this all into the city when there's no services even next to this property. So that was a shock. We got over that, and we worked with the city on, say, well, if we can bring in the lift station to this end of the property, we'll do the development so that it'll work for everybody. And we're not going to overspend on the infrastructure. But we've got to market the property at the same time and try to get people to understand where we're at, because right now, they don't know if this is going to be in the city, isn't going to be in the city, going to have infrastructure, isn't going to have infrastructure. So when... city, going to have infrastructure, isn't going to have infrastructure. So, when people are calling, we don't know what to tell them. We've changed in the middle of the stream to say that this now has to be annexed. When we started this whole process, we were going to be outside the city using county roads, storm, or, in the rural water and septic systems. So, I'll just suffice it to say, we're going to work with the city to do this development right. That's not, that's the only way I do a development. If you go to Bismarck, look at State Street Development, look at Eagle Crest, look at Boulder Ridge, look at Whispering Bay. My reputation is on the line as doing a development. I'll do it right, but I'm not going to overspend. I can't put infrastructure into the whole 160 acres and sit back and try to hope a lot sells. So, we're going to market this property. We're going to design it so that it works with, with the city to get water and sewer to this property. But, we aren't going to start that project until we at least have some interest in the lots and maybe even a lot sold. So, we'll work with the city to get this done right.
And at the same time, then, the city's stepping forward too with the impact fees to help, you know, take less than...
Well, I think if we want to be aggressive, there's a lot of things we could do as, as developers and the city to keep people in the city and give them a place to build because otherwise, we're going to have a hodgepodge everywhere around the city and nothing's going to be done right.
And that's what we're trying to prevent.
Yep. But, if we wait too long, we're going, we're going to also cause that same thing. Or, we're going to get people to leave the city of Dickinson and move to Minnetonka or other places where they can go find this kind of property. Because right now, we haven't been able to work with anybody for five or six months because this has changed halfway through and we don't know what to tell them. But, we're willing to work with the city to possibly annex it, but we've got to both come to agreements on what would work for both of us.
I guess, you know, we've been looking and we've found a local developer, somebody that is in our neck of the woods, has a vested interest in, in our community and is not a developer that is unknown to, to this area. We've set the standards that we want and I guess, in my opinion, I would want to move that, that we would approve the first reading is where I'm at with it.
Well, right now, we're at the, before we get to first reading, we've got the resolution approving the final plat. There is a, in the meeting memo, there is a suggested motion and it would be to approve this particular resolution for plat approval contingent on the successful annexation of the property. And I think that, Mr. Coleen has been through this process a number of times with us, but if, if you don't do it this way, then, once we've moved out, once we go down a path without doing this, then you have to get 75% approval.
Sure. That's correct, Mr. President, yes.
If I may address the commission as well. I understood this is a public hearing on the...
This is not a public hearing, yet. It's going to be shortly on, on the zoning. This is, actually, all we're doing right now is the resolution on the plat.
Would you prefer to wait for the comments from the public?
If, if, we're going to be in a public hearing shortly, so, okay. Are you ready to act on a motion or do you have other things you'd like to say or ask questions about? But, if you look at the very first page of the city administrators' meeting memo, you would have what I believe is the proper motion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
I will move for the plat approval, resolution number, where are we?
Resolution 35-2010.
35-2010, contingent on the successful annexation of the property and also contingent on the developer signing a development agreement that assures the construction of infrastructure.
Second.
Okay, you have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Mr. Knudsen, are you comfortable with that motion?
Could you just elaborate what that means by, what was the last part that where you said guarantees the development? I mean, of the parts that we're, we're working with the first phase or, or of the phase that we start with, correct?
You know, I'm purposely trying not to address the detail of what this development agreement will be, thinking that you can work that out with city staff. I heard something tonight that I had never heard before, that we can do some kind of an agreement that requires the infrastructure at the time the lots are sold. And that sounds great to me. I didn't know that could be done.
And that's what, that's all we need to do. That's what we had talked about and I think that works well.
If, if the eventual, as you work with city staff and our city attorney, if they decide that eventually that agreement, or ultimately, that agreement needs some financial guarantee, I think we need to rely on staff to do that. It may be as a combination. But, if this can be done in some other way, I'm all for that, as long as we have the assurance that the infrastructure will be built. That's all.
And our goal would be to only start that if we have some interest in the lots and somebody that's out there. And we would have to work with the city to do the infrastructure at the same time. They're also bringing the sewer, which is a long ways away, to the property and we've talked about that. So, I think it can work. It'll work well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments or discussion?
Now, Mr. President, just one other part of the discussion here about the financial guarantee and so on. I do think we have to be aware that, I think we have a set of precedents out there with just the last annexation out, out east and requiring that he provide a bond also. And is that not correct? We did require him to have a bond. So, the question would be, is, the size is here. I don't think we need a bond for the entire project or estimated completion of the product or whatever. But, I think since we set a precedence on, you know, if you're going to start this in phases, there probably need to be some type of guarantee like we're talking about for the first phase, which would be less amount of money than the entire project. That's, I know that's what we have out there and...
Mr. President?
Mr. Coleen.
I guess just two distinctions I would draw regarding the other property on which we, the commission required a bond to complete the road. That property, as I recall, was outside of city limits. The city has got a great deal more regulatory authority with regard to infrastructure, water, streets and sewer within city limits than we do within the extraterritorial zoning authority. So, when, when we talk about requiring developers to build to a certain standard and build, build infrastructure to city standards, that's only going to be applicable to properties within city limits on which the city can, can regulate and enforce those standards. If we were not talking annexation with this property, that sort of performance guarantee or contract guarantee that the infrastructure would be developed likely is not going to be possible. So, there are a couple of moving parts to this that, that are going to be different for properties that lie outside city limits. The other one is the development impact fees. As it's currently structured, it's only available for properties inside city limits. Anything outside city limits, we don't have that ability to grant development impact fees and, and require developers, incentivize developers to stage the development of properties.
Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, other comments, questions? All right, while we have a motion and I believe it was duly seconded, there's no other discussion. We'll proceed to vote on it. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Lambroun?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Soren, now I believe we go to a public hearing on the rezoning petition. And is there anything you want to say by way of introduction here?
Just to, to re, discuss the, the areas of the zoning and how it was put together. Once again, along Highway 22 with the plat was, was proposed as a general commercial which matches the zoning that's directly south and, and as we move south further into the city, that's the, the same zoning we've got on that side. Then, it, it goes to a limited industrial, which is a little bit heavier zone, one lot typically there. And then, it goes to a general industrial, heaviest zone that we, we do have in our zoning book. Just about any heavy industry type activity could, could happen in that type of a zoning district. And then, we start stepping back down with the limited again and then into the R2 adjacent to, to the residential. We've had several public hearings on this part of the plat as well and are recommending that the, the rezoning of this property.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soren. At this time, then, we declare the public hearing open. Anybody who wishes to comment regarding this rezoning issue may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments.
Mr. President, Commissioners, my name is Tom Kirchen and I'm the area manager and vice president for the Dickinson operation of Northern Improvement. And it's the owners' agreement that they do not wish to be annexed in on this annex. We feel there are no advantages per se. There are more disadvantages than advantages to being annexed. And we feel like we, we don't need to be annexed.
Do you object to the zoning in this, the way this plat is zoned? The zoning changes?
The zoning changes, if I'm correct, includes the annexation of Northern Improvement. Is that not correct?
Not yet. We are coming to that, but I mean, this is just the zoning issue here.
This is just the zoning of, of the North Industries Edition. Annexation is, is actually on the timetable for 650, which will be coming after that. It is part of this property that, that we're, we're talking about and is included in that annexation area. But, right now, we're just dealing with the, the rezoning of this parcel from ag to the general commercial, limited industrial, general industrial and R2.
I mean, we'll hear your, your comments, your feelings on annexation, but what we're going to address here in the next few minutes is really a zoning change just for that block of land that's in this development. And, and it doesn't affect the zoning of any land north of it where you're located.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, but I just, for the record, since you're speaking in opposition right now to a different issue, I just want to be clear that I don't think you're intending to oppose the zoning changes here.
Negative. Negative.
Yeah.
So...
But, you are opposed to...
The annexation.
To the annexation.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we've got that.
Okay. But, I need to restate that then at a later time or...
Well, I, I would suggest you stick around, but, you know, I think we understand your position, but, but...
And, and I've also prepared a memorandum for record also for the board, or for the commission also.
Okay, that'd be great. You can send that around when, when you feel it's appropriate.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, on the zoning issue here, is there anybody else that wants to speak on the zoning issue? I'll give you a chance to speak on the annexation issue when we get to that too. But, but this is this block of land for zoning.
My name is Sandra Coontz for the record and I own the property that is directly to the east of this proposed plat. I own 55 acres on the southeast corner that borders this property. And my concern with the R2 zoning is that all of the property bordering this proposed plat is all single-family residential at this point. And in fact, the 55 acres that is mine is currently ag property and we run a number of horses on there. I'm actually a 4-H leader in this community and so, we hold practices out in that area. And my concern with zoning this to an R2 is as you increase that population base out there, you increase the risk to those that already are zoned R1 and a number of those plats to the east of this are three, four acre playoffs with horses and that type of a residential setup in that particular area. And so, my objection is the R2 zoning. I also understand from some of the discussion today that Block Four, Lot One, on the very southeast corner of this, is somehow designated to be a drainage or zone for some sort of purpose in that regard. And I'm curious what the plan is so that my land, which is directly to the south of that particular lot, doesn't become the runoff area for whatever isn't taken care of in that process.
Mr. Soren, can you address those comments?
As, as far as the stormwater, the, the idea or the concept behind establishing a stormwater facility such as this is to not increase the amount of runoff from the property that's presently there. Once construction is done and you have paved streets and, and parking lots and things of that. So, the idea of, of that Block Four being a stormwater facility is to be able to, to hold the water, to, to slow the runoff so the same rate that the water's coming presently would continue after development occurs. So, it doesn't increase the amount of water that is hitting your, your property and creating other problems. That, that's the purpose of that.
And I know this extends beyond this particular plat, but I understand there is a Lyons plat that is also to the east of that. This entire area drains through a waterway that runs across my property and, and down across 10th Avenue East. And so, I would assume in your planning process that you're going to have some appropriate surveying done and the culvers to direct that so it does not impact the natural waterway system in there as well. Because there are dugouts on my land that, that allow me to keep the ag purposes that I have established there. So, I am looking for what you intend to do.
Certainly, the intent would be to keep as much natural as you, you can. As this develops, this would be the, the point of the discharge, which is the point presently. Your dugout happens to be just directly to the east of this where that water channels to. So, we'd be trying to keep that natural as, as much as we can. And obviously, by utilizing this facility, we'd be not increasing the amount of flow, not creating a flooding problem farther to the east or, or washing out your dugout or something of that nature because of the increased volume of water. That, that is the purpose of this. If this doesn't fully do it, there's other, depending on how the development goes, there's opportunities to do self-containment on, on the lots as well. But, but certainly, as we regulate this through the process, it's not to increase the amount of water that leaves this property onto yours. It's to maintain that level.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Soren, can you speak a little bit to the, again, the R2 because Ms. Coontz did object to the R2 zoning? What would be alternatives in this development if that was an R2?
Well, certainly, as Commissioner Lambroun brought up earlier, there was some discussion about an R3 in that area. You know, there's, was, the Lyons subdivision was proposed as an R1, so it could go to an R1 type of a, of a development. I don't believe the lots are, are big enough to go into a rural residential, which requires a minimum acre lot. So, you know, an R1, R2, R3 would be probably the closest that would align with, with the type of development that, that they're having to the, the east through the majority of, of this plat. Farther south, you know, if, if they'd rather, you know, you could put some commercial or something in there. I don't know that that's necessarily a better situation for what she's looking at, but it's certainly an, an option.
My preference would be for everything east of Fourth Avenue East would be R1. That matches what is already proposed as plats or approved as plats from Northview Acre subdivision, south to what is a proposed Lyons plat and into my 55... Acre subdivision, south to what is a proposed Lyons plat, and into my 55 acres, which is currently ag. And I believe those discussions were held at the zoning and planning as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment on the zoning? Well, this is a first reading, so there has to be two readings. So I think if there is going to be a little rethinking or negotiating on the zoning there of the property just east of 4th Avenue, there's opportunity for that to take place yet. Mr. Knudsen, do you... Would you care to comment regarding the issues that Ms. Coontz raised?
Mr. Commissioners, first of all, I appreciate Sandy's comments, and I want to be a good neighbor. This was kind of a thought that if you go from a light industrial, you know, single-family home lots are usually more expensive, are kind of bigger lots. And this, we thought, was a good transition between a light industrial on one side of the street and a residential, which is what Sandy prefers in the future. I guess I just look at what we do when we're looking at areas. In Bismarck, we usually go from a commercial area to a transition area to a single-family home area, and this just seemed to be a really good buffer between light industrial and residential behind it. We really don't have any plans to develop this for maybe 20 years. I mean, I think this could be kind of a moot point. I don't really have a problem looking at changing it and working with Sean on it. I just think that's what this should be someday, and I don't think it's anytime soon. But if you can understand, usually, go light industrial, right to single-family homes is not the most desirable transition. It isn't a transition, whereas this leads duplex lots or, you know, that type of density then into single-family, and it just seems to make sense. But I'm willing to work with anybody here, including...
You're not doing this development for the...
No. We just thought that would be the nice transition, but I think you might have hard times selling single-family lots there, whereas a little bit lower-priced transition lot like a duplex lot would be a probably easier sell for the future. And I'd appreciate any other comments. Mr. Jackson probably has, as an engineer in the past, has comments on that, so I'd appreciate... But I'd be willing to work with Sandy and Sean to change that if it's a big problem.
Okay.
It isn't something that's going to be done, I can see, for many, many, many years, would be my guess.
Okay. Thank you.
If that's the case, Mr. President, another possibility would be to use what they call a planned unit development, a PUD, and let the forces, I guess, basically determine what type of transition they'd want in the future rather than designate it now.
I'm not sure I'm familiar, or I remember how that works. Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, our code does allow for planned unit developments. That's not something that we have discussed on this plat. Other than that, I don't think we have any other information. But that's something that the commission is interested in, and we can certainly discuss that with the developer.
I guess my recommendation would be that we act on the first reading, and that gives the city two weeks and the developer two weeks between now and the second reading to, you know, if you're going to make some adjustments to make them, you know, but at least get this process moving along. Or keep it moving. If there's no one else, if there's no one else in the public on the zoning, we'll declare the public hearing closed on that then, and the chair to entertain a motion if there is one. If you have more discussion, we'll certainly listen to your discussion.
Mr. Chairman, are we considering the ordinance proposal that was in our binder?
Yes.
I would suggest then that we do some corrections before we carry on then, because Sections 2, Section 3, Section 4 refer to an R3 designation as opposed to an R2 that we have in the Section 1. Also, under Blocks 7, Lot 5 has been omitted from the listing of zoning changes.
Mr. Coling, do we have some errors here in this?
As possible, Mr. President. The plat map has gone through a couple iterations. I can... If you want to pass through the ordinance with the notations that Commissioner Lambroun made, we can make sure that we have the zoning changed on second reading.
Well, no. If there are mistakes here, let's go through it now and get them right, get them correct. So, I mean, it's about time for a bathroom break. I think we'll take a bathroom break while you guys look at this ordinance and make sure we've got it R2 where it's supposed to be R2 and so on and so forth. So, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. We'll come back to order. Mr. Coling, this ordinance, number 1392, can you take us through it and make the corrections?
Yes, Mr. President. On Section 2, the second line, there's a reference to an R3 district that should be an R2 district. On Section 3, the same thing, second line, there's a reference to an R3 that should be an R2. On the second page, in Section 4, that's the same change, section, or this reference to R3 should be a reference to R2. And then at the top of that back page, there is a block that is missing, or a lot that is missing, rather, Block 7, Lot 5, should be added to that.
Block 7, Lot 5?
Correct.
Mr. Lambroun, does that jive with what you had said earlier before the recess?
Yes, it does, Mr. President.
Okay. So that would be the ordinance, then, that we're considering for first reading. Is there any other discussion on this? Okay, would there be a motion regarding first reading of ordinance number 1392?
Who's to approve ordinance 1392?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Lambroun?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Okay, we're now at the 6:30 timetable item, and that's the final plat regarding the Berwick 2nd subdivision. And Mr. Soren, would you introduce that?
Mr. President Johnson, this is a final plat of a two-lot subdivision. It's directly north of the one we previously talked about. Along Highway 22, we've got Two's Construction, Coca-Cola, and then as we go east, this Champion Technologies is directly west of this plat. It is a 10-acre plat, split into two different parcels, with the intent of it becoming an LI-zoned property. It's currently zoned agricultural. I believe Champion Technologies has plans to possibly build an office complex on this subdivision and is the reason for the platting of this parcel. With that, planning and zoning is recommending approval of the final plat of Berwick 2nd subdivision.
Okay. You've heard the engineers' report and recommendation. Any comments or questions by Commissioners? Again, the city officials are recommending a motion to approve this resolution for plat approval contingent on the successful annexation of the property. So, any discussion along that line? I'm ready.
Sorry. I'll make the same motion. Do we approve resolution, or are we 36?
Nope. 29.
Mr. President, that is mispronounced. There it is, resolution number 36.
It is 36, okay.
36-2010, approving the Berwick plat contingent on the successful annexation of the property and contingent on the developer agreeing to assurances regarding infrastructure.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kessler or Mr. Coling, the additional stipulation that Mr. Jackson added, has that been discussed with this developer?
President Johnson, Commissioner, that has not been discussed with that developer at this point. We obviously have a template that we can easily adopt if it's kosher with the developer.
Other comments or questions? Are you Mr. Berwick?
I'm Mr. Berwick.
All right.
Quentin Kitzner, BK Industries, representing Champion Technologies. I guess just clarify what that means, the annex, what's the template?
As we've discussed ad nauseam this evening, it would be using the city's impact fee program to limit your development and then require that any infrastructure be done to a city standard, whether that's street, roads, water, sewer, and that it be that any ensuing property owner would agree to the same.
So if they, their intent is to put the office building out there, what would they have to do to fulfill what you're requesting?
Let me jump in. Let me jump in. Obviously, this is a very different situation than the plat we looked at a few minutes ago. It will likely be a long time before we're to this property with water and sewer. But we do have road considerations, as we will with any plat, and those roads should be built or some kind of assurance that they will be built before the plat is filed. So from a practical standpoint, that's what we're doing on this plat, very different than Mr. Knudsen's plat.
So, right now, we're having a county road that we're running approaches off of. We're not required to do anything to that county road.
Well, we have a road at the north end, too, I believe.
Correct.
So we'll just need some assurance. And the rest of you need to jump in here, but if we don't do it now, we will not have the ability to do it later.
So what we're asking is if this property is annexed with the rest of it, that it's built to city standards. That's the surety that you want. And we have that surety if it's annexed, right?
Mr. Commissioner, I believe the way our code reads, the city standard is defined somewhat particularly, it's defined to a standard approved by the city engineer. So whether that includes curb and gutter or whether that is what we know as a county road spec, that would be something that we would have to discuss with the developer as to what exactly the city would require in that regard.
So, Mr. Coling, are you saying essentially what the city engineer agrees to is what the city requires?
That's essentially what the code says, yes.
Mr. Jackson, what you're wanting assurance is that this will be developed to city standards. That's the surety that you want.
We have all kinds of examples of subdivisions that have been proved in the last couple of years, but nobody has ever improved the streets and the roads. We don't want that.
Right.
Did that add a little more clarity?
It's like mud. Well, you know, the owner is not totally opposed to annexation. I just, I need to go back and clarify what I'm agreeing to, I guess. The first thing I see is we have a county road, there's Two's Construction and Champion's existing facility on that road. I'm assuming you're not trying to tell me I need to pave the 300 feet in front of their place and the rest of it be gravel. I would expect we're going to have to do a septic system at this time with, when, if services are out there, we would hook up to those services. Is that what we're trying to get to here?
That sounds reasonable, but again, I hesitate to get into the detail...
Okay.
...until the staff gets us some guidance here and helps us with some policy.
I believe, I don't have any problem working with the city staff to establish an agreement for the development of this property. I don't think they'll, we'll have anything that can't be adhered to. Mr. Soren, would you agree?
I would agree, but, you know, as we move forward with the annexation and where that goes, there's going to be a lot of questions that are asked and things that have to be answered, and this certainly is going to fall within that criteria. You know, one of the examples is the road on the north side of this. You're currently probably not planning to develop that lot...
At this time, correct.
You know, at this time, but at some point, when that does happen, you know, we should have a better understanding of our spec and where we're going to be with water, sewer, street development for the whole subdivision if that annexation follows through, throughout the, you know, as we're proposing later here for that north area. But, you know, anything north of 34th Street, you know, there's a lot of questions that are going to have to be answered if the annexation goes through the way we're proposing it here tonight as it goes to infrastructure, and I think this clearly falls within, in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion on the motion?
A question for Mr. Soren. The map, the preliminary plat map we, or excuse me, the plat map we have here says preliminary. I gather that the results, the final is the same?
Yes, it is. I just noticed that we got the wrong copy, too, to read before the packet.
Okay, well, we have a motion to approve this resolution with two stipulations. And we have the second. Is there any other discussion? If not, then I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Lambroun?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Now, we go to a public hearing regarding rezoning, and, Mr. Soren, I'm going to ask you to introduce the rezoning portion of this.
The rezoning of this lot, currently, it is agriculturally zoned. They are requesting it be zoned limited industrial. All the property to the west of this, between it and Highway 22, is limited industrial. The property to the north of it is limited industrial as well. The property to the east is currently zoned agricultural. However, Northern Improvement is using it as a staging facility where they've got some stockpiles in that area as well. So with that, we're recommending we rezone this from agricultural to limited industrial.
Okay. This time, we'll declare the public hearing open. Anybody that wishes to comment regarding the zoning change may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak to the rezoning issue here? If not, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Not, we'll declare the public hearing closed. And commissioners, any comments or questions? What is the ordinance number on this one, Mr. Coling?
It would be ordinance 1393.
1393, okay. So is there a motion regarding ordinance 1393?
Mr. President, move to approve ordinance number 1393.
Okay, we've got the motion for the first reading, is there a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. We're now at the 6:50 timetable agenda item. This is the Northside Properties Annexation. This would, this is another resolution, so at this time, and I think that resolution was passed out to us, Mr. Soren, would you care to introduce this item?
Yes, President Johnson, city commissioners. Through the past several months, we've been working on several developments on the north side. A couple of them we've talked about tonight, being the North Industries, Berwick Second, Lyons is another one that was brought up. And with that being in our growth area, the discussion has been brought that annexation is certainly something we need to consider and look at as we go this direction. When we looked at the areas that we're proposing, I think, you have a map that shows the areas that I'm referring to, but when we looked at this and the development that's currently in the area, it was determined that maybe it would be in the best interest to look at expanding that area to include some of the businesses on the north side of town as well, include them within this annexation proposal. So what that map shows of the proposed areas includes Dan Porter's second subdivision, which is directly north of the city limits, between the city limits and on the south side of North Industries' subdivision. It includes the North Industries that we talked about. It includes the proposed Lyons subdivision that was presented several meetings ago. It includes the Berwick Second subdivision that we talked about tonight. Then directly to the west of Berwick Second is a replat of Berwick's First, which is the subdivision that has Champion Technologies, Two's Construction, Coca-Cola within it. And then the subdivision that is, north of that is Lane subdivision, which has Northern Improvement, Andrus Outdoors, some storage units in the area. And I, there's a Henry Brown owns a business and a building up there on the backside, and several other properties, and I don't have all the names of those businesses, but that whole area is what's outlined on the map and is part of the resolution for annexation. The total area that we're looking at is approximately 325 acres. That's included in the proposed annexation area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Soren. Mr. Coling, I know you've done this before, but I'm going to ask you to do it again and just take us through the annexation process that the city will go through, beginning with this resolution, if you would, please.
Sure, Mr. President, commissioners, the annexation process begins with this resolution that you're considering tonight. If the commission passes this resolution, it calls for the annexation of the area that Mr. Soren identified. If the resolution is passed, it will be published, and a notice of hearing will be mailed out to all of the property owners within the area that is proposed to be annexed. Once the resolution is passed, property owners have a 30-day time period in which to object to annexation. In order to object, they need to file a written objection with City Hall, and City Hall will compile those and determine the amount of area that, the amount of area for which owners have objected to the annexation. If more than 25% of the owners of area within this proposed annexation district, if they file written objections, then it is a bar to annexation. The city cannot annex the property without going through some extended mediation with the property owners and coming to an agreement with them. If less than 25% of the area that is proposed to be annexed, owners of that area do not file an objection, then the city annexes the property and annexation is effective. I believe it's on February 1st of the day following annexation. Now, in order to determine whether or not 25% of the owners have filed protests, you will need to hold a meeting once that 30-day time period runs out and determine whether objections, sufficient objections have been filed. That decision is yours, and you can identify the owners as they file objections and as you determine those. But otherwise, it's this resolution and then a meeting to determine objections, and if less than 25% object, the property is annexed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coling. As I said earlier, we will take public comments, so if there's anyone here that wishes to comment on this issue, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Again, my name is Tom Kirchen, and I represent Northern Improvement for Dickinson, and I just want to recertify my statement that I made earlier, that we do not want to be annexed at this time. We wish not to be annexed in this annexation.
Okay, and I think Mr. Coling has said that, I think, to do this properly, you should file a written statement with the city, and--
Yes.
I believe you have one, but--
Yeah. And actually, this memorandum for record is just for this meeting, so we can file another letter--
Okay.
--for later time.
But you should do so within 30 days, if I understood?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson and city commissioners, I have Andrus Outdoors, I'm right beside Northern, and we would prefer, too, not to be annexed onto the city. The building was built back in 84, and it was, it's basically a bait shop and a gun We don't use city water in our business, we have to have well water, and we haven't had sewer there since 1984. We just prefer that we stayed out of the city limits, too. Thank you.
Could, we have your name for the record?
My name is Greg Knutson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Knutson.
Thank you.
Again, just to remind you also that, you know, file a written notice with the city, your objection, you've got it. All right, great. Okay. Any comments or discussion by city commissioners?
Mr. President?
Mr. Landblum?
I just noticed in the drawing here that the annexation doglegs itself to west side of, to the right of way, on the west side of Highway 22. The rationale for that is?
Well, let Mr. Soren--
On the south side, it's currently annexed to the center line.
To the center line, and then anything that goes north, all the way up towards Northern Improvement, et cetera, goes on the west side of the highway, so we're annexing--
Basically, all of Highway 22 right away from north of Northern Improvement, south.
Okay.
On the south end, that portion that's doglegging is currently within the city limits.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Other comments or questions? All right, will there be a motion? And let's see, this resolution is resolution number what?
It would be 37-2010.
Okay. Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
I will move for the approval of resolution 37-2010 regarding the proposed annexation.
I would second it.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr.?
I was wondering about those lots, those residential lots north of Lyons subdivision, or proposed Lyons subdivision, particularly lots one and two, and one and two. Is there a reason that we're not considering them for possible annexation?
Mr. Soren, could you address that?
I believe when we had the discussion regarding the annexation, you've got two subdivisions there, both of them just have one home on them at this point. And it's my understanding they don't have much of a plan to develop that area in the near future, that it's developed how they had planned. And the present benefit, I guess, when we looked at the area of annexation, seemed to favor more the industrial park than trying to go after the land area of those residential properties. So that's why, I guess.
Okay. They're just, it's just kind of obvious they're sitting out there by themselves, and we've made an effort at, trying to be contiguous here, and this is why it's kind of curious.
Is there something more you wanted from Mr. Soren than, okay. Other comments, questions? Not, we'll vote on the motion then. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll go back to the non-time table agenda, and I believe we're on item E, water rate changes. And this is a ordinance. Mr. Kessel or Mr. Coling, are one of you presenting that?
Yes, Mr. President, commissioners, the proposed ordinance before you is attempted to get at the issue of water vendors. If you will recall, a couple meetings ago, we passed a, the commission passed a resolution allowing for an increase in the per thousand gallon rate charged at the city-operated water vendor. What we have discovered since that time is there are private companies who are attempting to take advantage of the difference in rate, water rate increase, and attempting to operate private water vendors to take advantage of the $4 per thousand gallon rate that the city charges for non-water vendor use. This proposed ordinance would make the city the exclusive seller of water in bulk for any water from the city waterwork system and provide a penalty for that. It also allows you to tier the rate that the city charges for water, so that water up to a certain amount could be at the normal rate, and anything above that be at an increased rate to match what the city currently charges for use of the water vendor.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. And what is the ordinance number here?
This would be ordinance 1394.
Okay. Well, at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone from the public that wishes to comment regarding this proposed ordinance. If so, just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? All right, there's no one from the public. Comments by other city staff or city commissioners regarding this proposed ordinance? Okay, is there a motion regarding this ordinance, then, if there's no comments?
Mr. President, move to approve first reading ordinance 1394.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Coling, is there anything that precludes us, the city, from being the monopoly provider in this regard?
That's what the ordinance is intended to do, is to provide the city as the exclusive seller of water in bulk, that other entities within the city would not be entitled to sell in bulk, and that there would be a penalty in the case that they would do so.
But you don't see, foresee any problem about the city being the sole provider as a vendor?
As, I, it's well within the city's rights to enact such an ordinance, yes.
That's all I need to know.
Okay, other comments, questions, discussion? Do you have a question? Come to the mic and identify yourself, and we'll hear.
My name is Lisa Colly, I work for the Dickinson Press. I'm just trying to see where, in the ordinance, what is the limit per person? It mentioned in the packet that you're trying to limit the amount people are using so that the city's not going over the amount that they're allotted. What is the limit per person?
I don't know that there's a limit per person. The city has, as I understand it, a limit by Southwest Water, how much, you know, we have an allocation. Do I have that?
It just, it says--
Do I understand it?
The ordinance allows the city to limit the quantity of water used by a single user to ensure the city does not get in danger of exceeding its allotment of water. So what is that quantity limit for a single user?
Mr. President, the limit that the city has from Southwest Water is 6 million gallons per day. That is, that's how we're capped by Southwest Water. Mr. Kessel may want to jump in here, but I don't think we're anywhere near that limit at this point, but it is something that we want to have, the ability to shut off a water customer if it does endanger the rest of the city or the rest of the city's ability to access Southwest Water.
Right, but her question is, then, that we refer to limiting an individual to a specified number or a specified amount. Have we determined an amount where we would say to someone, that's too much, you're endangering, or you're getting us too close to our 6 million gallons a day?
President Johnson, commissioners, there is no, you will not find a limit in this ordinance specifically. The intent is, when a single user is jeopardizing the water usage for the rest of the community, that we would inform them of that, ask them to stop using or make sure that they are using their water in a manner that doesn't jeopardize the rest of our city limit, and provide them with a limit at that time. But there is no specific limit in the ordinance as it exists before you today. We hope that we never have to enact such a limitation, but considering our growth and the type of water that is required for the industries in our area, we envision that that might happen, and it would be terrible to jeopardize our residents and existing businesses.
Well, between, if it passes tonight, between the first reading and the second reading, it might not hurt to take a closer look at that, and maybe you may have some suggestions on, maybe some wording changes there. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I think we do have a motion and a second. Are you ready to vote? Okay, well, we'll, Mr. Steiner, we'll begin with you. Mr. Steiner votes aye, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Lambom?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries, so we have first reading then. Item F is another ordinance change. This one is regarding compensation for city employees. Mr. Coling, would you introduce this also?
Please, Mr. Kessel has taken this one.
Mr. Kessel is okay.
President Johnson, Commissioners, we have found in the environment that exists today, contrary to the national trends, is that finding employees, qualified employees, has been difficult. We are requesting the ability to establish a sign-on bonus system that would work something like a bonus upon hire, a bonus upon successful completion of their probationary period, and then a third segment of the same bonus at successful completion of one years of employment. We find that our turnover rate, especially amongst our public works employees, especially the ones that require a CDL or a commercial driver's license, has been difficult. We are not getting that many applications for that position, nor has the quality of those applications been to what we hoped. By establishing a sign-on bonus, we are hoping to bring more applicants to the table, and hire a quality individual, and then keep them for an extended period of time. It's used extensively in the private arena. More public agencies are using this. The state of North Dakota has a sign-on bonus system in their Department of Transportation as well, because they're dealing with similar issues as we are. So this ordinance would allow for a sign-on bonus system for selected staff positions, and I'm mentioning that those would be in our public works department, at least initially.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Since this is an ordinance, I'll ask if there's anyone from the public that wishes to comment. If you do, you may step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? Okay, no one from the public. Comments then by city commissioners? No comments, is there a motion regarding this item? I assume this is ordinance number, is it thirteen ninety-four?
Thirteen ninety-five.
Ninety-five, I'm behind one, okay.
Mr. President, I'll move for approval of first reading ordinance thirteen ninety-five.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Lambom?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Item G is a funding request. This is for the Old Red, Old Ten Scenic Byway. Mr. Kessel, would you introduce it?
Thank you, President Johnson, City Commissioners. As President Johnson mentioned, the request is to support the operations of the Old Red, Old Ten Scenic Byway. We did support them in two thousand and nine. If you recall, CBB Executive Director Terry Thiel also mentioned this funding request, and we would like to incorporate that, modify the two thousand and ten budget to be able to fund this request in two thousand and ten, and then add it to our two thousand and eleven budget as well. We use hospitality tax dollars to fund this request of a thousand dollars in each of those years.
Was it in the two thousand and eleven budget that's in our packet right now? So it is included there, so we're okay there. We just have to deal with the two thousand and ten. If you want to do this, it's a motion, as I would understand it, to amend the two thousand and ten budget for a thousand dollars and fund it from the hospitality tax.
I would make that motion.
We have the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote then. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Lambom?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. It gets us to item H, which is development impact fees, and who is introducing this? Mr. Coling?
President, I'll take the first stab at it. Ordinance, proposed ordinance before you makes some changes to our development impact fees. We have discussed a little bit about that already with regard to the annexation of the other properties, but to give you an overview of the proposed changes made to this ordinance, it would allow for the use of our existing development impact fee system for the development of commercial and industrial properties. To date, the development impact fees have only been used for residential development within the city. Now that we're seeing some commercial development, industrial development, city staff thought it may be advisable to expand that program and allow for its use for commercial and industrial development as well. In order to do that, there are a couple of limits that are changed in here. Existing city ordinance limits the amount that the city might, may have outstanding in development impact fees to two million dollars. This proposed ordinance would extend that to seven million dollars. Also, the limit in existing ordinance is three hundred thousand dollars per project. This proposed ordinance would keep that limit in place for residential developments, but for commercial and industrial developments, it would extend that limit to six hundred thousand dollars per project. Those are the main changes made by this proposed ordinance. And Mr. Kessel or Mr. Soren may wish to comment on it as well?
If I may, President Johnson, Commissioner, I'd just like to add one other thing. The city, once the impact fees are provided, it's on a reimbursement basis, so the developer incurs the cost, submits those expenses to us. If they've met our previous criteria, fifty percent up to whatever limit, then we would reimburse those. We in turn then special those dollars back to the benefited properties. In the residential program, we do that right now on a ten-year basis, and what we're proposing is in the industrial, commercial, we do that over a five-year period. So that is a rather significant difference. It's felt like that will return the dollars quicker into the program, and allow them to turn, so to speak, more quickly as well. So it limits our exposure, even though the amount is higher, the amount of years would be much less.
Thank you, Mr. Coling, Mr. Kessel, Mr. Soren, anything you want to add to what they said?
I guess the only thing that I would add regarding this whole program is, you know, we've had it for several years where we've been working this. I think it's been a very good tool for us to get logical, decent development as we move forward. The developers have utilized it to set the size of their projects based on the dollar amounts that are available, which has helped us in not overdeveloping. With the industrial part of it, and the increase that's there, some of the thoughts are that lots are a lot bigger in nature, it's going to require more to get, you know, bigger projects to get more lots on the improved area, and therefore, we thought it was a better mix in trying to increase the size of the projects for those developments. You know, if you've got, you know, four, or five, ten-acre tracks compared to ten thousand square feet, for example. So that was one of the thoughts, I guess, in the back of my mind for the increase for the industrial part of it, and I think it'll work the same, and will be a good tool for us through that process as well.
All right, well, thank you for the introductions. At this time, I'll ask if anyone from the public wishes to comment regarding this proposed ordinance. If you do, just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? Okay, there's no one from the public, certainly invite comments and questions from city commissioners.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson?
I think the ordinance is good, and I think it's good changes. I think it, I think the impact fee system has been good. I think it's helped us temper the pace of development, and acknowledge that our community has a stake in new development as well. Did you guys talk about, as you rewrote this, the need to address, in some policy, other extraordinary infrastructure? I suppose the impact fee program could be used to build a lift station, or such things, but it seems to me we haven't talked about policy in that regard as much as we perhaps should be.
Commissioner Jackson, and the rest of the commission, we did talk about that briefly. I'll use the North Industries Platte as an example. We've referred to this evening the possibility of a lift station being located in and around that area to service not only North Industries Platte, but also a much larger area than that. The cost of providing that specific lift station is anticipated to be around a half a million dollars. Our current, we're building a lift station as we speak, a retrofitting one. The cost of that lift station is around eight hundred thousand dollars. We're using user fees and other things to pay for that, that work. We've not asked adjoining property owners to pay for that. If, you know, as you stated, we could use development fees as a way to lessen the burden that the city, or the exposure that the city would have, you could use impact, or excuse me, connection fees for areas that are going to be developed at a much later time, as in the case with North Industries. The areas that it would possibly serve won't be developed for possibly years. When they are developed, you could charge connection fees to help defray the expenses of that lift station. So although not specifically developed, or not specifically mentioned in this ordinance, there was some thought process, and if the city commissioners have a more specific line of thought, we'd love to entertain that.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Other comments, questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Lambom?
Could you refresh my memory as to the source of these funds, the additional funds that are going to be asked for?
Well, I think, you know, that's a good question, because really the question is, how is this to be funded? The, you know, with the two million dollar limit, we're essentially funding that the seed money is from the general fund. This, you know, this is large enough that I don't believe you can just do this from the general fund, so do you have a funding plan in mind?
President Johnson, Commissioners, the funding plan right now is to bond for the expenses that would be incurred with the impact program. We would generate, and as you've said, we've paid for that currently out of existing fund balances. When we got to the point where we felt it was large enough and beneficial, we could bond for it and pay for it in that manner.
Mr. Jackson?
I think we may need to make it clear, though, to anybody listening to this meeting, that the costs for the project are still going to be borne by the developer and/or property owner. There are no city funds in here. There is some city risk, but there are no city funds in the impact fee process. I raised the other question that I did, is because I think with some of these extraordinary things, there may be a place for city tax dollars to be used to encourage the right kind of development. I don't know that we have that policy today, but it's something we need to contemplate, I think.
Well, I think, using the lift station example, I think you could argue that that is economic development, and right now, you know, the city sales tax ordinance from the original one percent sales tax says that twenty percent of that tax is dedicated to seniors and economic development. You could rewrite the agreement with Stark County Development Corporation, and divert some of those funds for a project like the lift station. Or you could work with Stark County Development and say, you know, this, using this as an example, that this development is, this industrial park is economic development, and as part of the city's contribution here, we would like Stark County Development to finance a portion or all of the lift station. I mean, those are options available. I don't know that, you know, you need to try write a policy, Commissioner Jackson. I think you just need to use the tools that we already have. We have pretty good tools here, and each of these projects are very different. Commissioner Steiner was concerned earlier about setting a precedent. I, you know, I think you only set a precedence if the projects you're talking about are not necessarily identical, but certainly very similar. And most of these are one of a kind, and I think you're going to have to kind of customize the assets that you have at your disposal to deal with these. And I, and sometimes that takes us a little longer to, you know, work through the process here, but I don't think there is any one policy, one set of rulebooks that you can write to deal with all this. But I think, you know, you raise good issues on, issues that are going to have to be dealt with, but we do have quite a few tools available to us. Mr. Kessel?
I can mention, President Johnson, that we've utilized some of those. I did, I was present at an industrial committee meeting of Stark Development, and did present the North Industries Platte, and very specifically, any help that they could provide the city to develop that infrastructure. And I think it was met, and I hate to speak, Mr. Baker's here, he can speak on behalf, or even Mr. Jackson, who is their chair, but I think it was met with some favoritism, or, excuse me, some favorable comments, that this does a lot for them as well in terms of sponsoring economic development without sponsoring a single entity, and maybe establishing a precedent like Mr. Steiner's concerned about.
You know, and some of this goes back, ties back to the very early minutes of this meeting, Mr. Kessel, when you mentioned maybe retaining an engineering firm to help us with public affairs, and mainly in the area of government financing. And that, we, you know, our staff and our commissioners certainly don't know all that's available, or potentially available to us. But if we retain a public affairs group that does, we can talk to them specifically about some of the projects we have, some of the impact costs that we're experiencing, and have them assist us in maybe procuring some federal funds, some state funds, you know, to help with this. I know there are programs available now through Bank of North Dakota in terms of guaranteeing some of the risk, so if we go out and bond, say, to finance the seed money for this development impact fee ordinance, Bank of North Dakota might be willing to guarantee a portion of that. They, also on the development costs related to the industrial park. I think there, if I recall, when we had a meeting with them, I think they would guarantee up to about twenty-five percent of the cost of that, so, which means if everything went south, at least the city isn't holding the bag for the entire amount bonded. You know, the Bank of North Dakota would step in to assume some of that risk. But again, it kind of makes an argument for retaining a firm to help us with this. But I think we definitely, even though we get our money back, as long as, you know, the lots that are development, the people will pay their special assessments, the business as well, the city does upfront costs here. And so if, again, if things went south on us, there is some risk. But I, if we do the bonding term correctly, we match the term to length, the time that the special assessments run, and it should the special assessments run, and it should cash flow properly and, and work out, so. We had, Mr. Kessel, you and I had a discussion a few days ago where I raised the question about, you know, the city bonding limit. Did you get a chance to research that and understand what our legislative limits are?
The easiest way to research that is to delegate, so I asked Finance Director Johnson, and she mentioned that $10 million is our bonding limit, but I don't believe special assessment that applies to the bonding limits of a community, since it's actually being paid for by benefited properties.
Okay. Well, we'll have to be certain on that. I mean, okay. I had another question as it relates to, to the, the payment of the impact fees. Since we treat residential different from the industrial or, or commercial, if we take the, the north side properties, for example, there's a little bit of residential in there. If, if we were assessing back, I'm assuming, since this is predominantly a commercial, we would assess that back over a five-year period rather than a 10-year period. Is, is that the way you would read the ordinance also?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. President, that we've included the definition for residential and commercial industrial property, and refers to the predominant use of the area, so that's correct.
Okay. Are there other questions or comments? Okay, do, do we have a motion on this?
No.
No.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
I move to approve the first reading ordinance number 1395.
Six.
Six.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing done, then we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Lambum?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll go to Tab 6, Public Works Engineering. Seems like we've been on Public Works Engineering the whole night, but...
Apparently I stacked everything for one meeting.
Well...
This one is a rezoning, it's the second reading of the rezoning ordinance for the KLD subdivision. The KLD subdivision is a recently annexed subdivision to the city of Dickinson, located on the southeast part of town along the, the truck route. The, the property is currently zoned agricultural. The, the request is to, to rezone that to limited industrial, and our recommendation, planning and zoning recommendation, is to approve the rezoning.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shoren. I'll ask if there's anyone from the public that wishes to comment regarding this ordinance. If so, come to the podium, state your name, anybody from the public? Okay, no one from the public. Any other comments by city commissioners? Is there a motion?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm ready.
President, move to approve the second reading and final passage ordinance 1389.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, second, any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Lambum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
The next item I have is water main replacement. In, on the, the agenda, it's labeled as Phase 2. It's labeled that because earlier we approved a water main replacement on Second Street, and, and that's in 2010. The reason I clarify that is because the, the packet that you have in front of you showing the water main replacement does have a Phase 1 and Phase 2 phase setup for this project, but we aren't talking about just half that, we're talking about the whole project. We did open bids on the, on that project last week. We did have four bidders, with Mike's Excavation being the low bid of $1,007,777.06. The engineer's estimate for that project was just under $1.5 million. And with that, we did talk with Mike's for concerns of possible errors or missing something through the, the bidding process. He feels confident that they've got everything in there. We've had him do work for us in the past and has been a, a good contractor for us, so we are recommending awarding the water main replacement project to Mike's Excavation.
You've heard the engineer's recommendation. Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll move, we award the contract to Mike's Excavation.
Is there a second? We have the second. Any discussion? Just have a question, I guess more out of curiosity. You know, we've got, you're replacing water mains kind of scattered throughout the city. How do you decide which ones should be, be replaced?
Our water department prioritized the list based on age. Most of them, it's, it's areas where they've had water main breaks in the past, and so expecting that all of that block is the same pipe or, or something, that's where we've selected to replace those. This one, we do have 18th Avenue East on here, which currently is, is a new install. It's part of our urban roads project for next year. That's, that's why it's included in this, this project, to get that done before we come in and put the curb and gutter and, and streets in on that road.
Okay. Well, thank you. Any other questions, comments? That, we'll proceed to vote on the motion then. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Lambum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lambum?
Question for Mr. Shoren as to the status of the project over on First and Second Streets, or, or West. I notice that there's nobody doing much work over in that area. Is it, is the underground completed and...
He's, the underground has about 200 feet to go. He's had several issues with the, the project where they get it put together, pressure it up, it's not holding pressure, so they're having to dig it back up. Apparently there's, when they're putting the pipe together, the, the gasket that's in there is rolling over and, and not staying glued. So we don't know if it's a install error, or if there's a glue problem with the, the gasketting on the pipe, but, but we've had several issues like that, on that project. So we're hoping within the, the next week or so he'll be done. Northern Improvement will be back in there and, and complete that project.
When do you project that Northern Improvement to show up to do the surfacing?
Um...
Their timeline?
They haven't given us the time limit yet. I know they've got a lot of work in the area. They're doing the, the road out by the golf course yet. They're, they've got some work up north, I believe, on Highway 22. We are anticipating that they'll be here towards the end of the month to come in and get that completed, but I don't have a, a firm date for you.
Anything else you want to add in your report?
Just a couple of items under the, the reports. We had an energy committee meeting that, that will be coming in front of you. Again, Wesco Operating is looking to drill another well. I guess they're looking to drill a well in the area where Armstrong did, south and, and west of the golf course. Theirs is a little bit farther south, a little bit farther west, but it's still within our two mile. So we had that, that meeting. We have notified the property owners. That'll be coming at the next city commission meeting for a public hearing. And then the other one is the, the code enforcement report that I have in there. Just an update on new building permits. To date, we're at 120 compared to 51 last year, you know, so we're more than double. Our additions and alterations were comparable to last year at the same, same time, you know, 138 compared to 136, but just to show that we're continuing to be busy in the, the new construction area. We do have several projects. We're working on two hotels right now that, that are in the pipeline, under permitting process, and expect those to be starting construction here shortly.
Any comments or questions for the city engineer? Are you doing the public works side here too, or is that over on this side of the table?
I'll take that hat. President Johnson and commissioners, the first item that I have is the evacuation, or the excavation of burial purposes, the city-owned cemeteries. This item was put out for bids. We only had one bidder, Mr. Lowman. Mr. Lowman is our current contractor, and as I reported last time, the bid document is, is for you, and we are requesting that you approve, Mr. Lowman, and this bid.
Did, did the bid change much from the current prices?
No, there was a slight increase, but there wasn't anything significant.
Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'd make the motion to approve Lane Lowman as the contractor for the excavation of burial plans.
Okay. We have the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Lambum?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries.
The second item then is a report from North Dakota Department of Health regarding our landfill. We submitted a application and permit. It is a 10-year permit, once obtained. Our application was not met with favor, simply because we did not update information. We basically used a lot of the operational procedures from, that existed in our previous application. We've asked for an extension. They've granted that extension through September 8th of 2011. In the 2011 budget, there is dollars to hire and do some planning at our landfill. We are hoping and planning that when we request proposals for this project, that it would include a successful completion of this permit. So just to, to keep the commissions up to date, we have received the extension we requested, and we anticipate making a successful application prior to the September 8th timeframe of 2011. Having a public works director on staff would greatly enhance our chances.
Okay. Well, why don't you just continue with your city administrators' report?
Thank you. The first item that I have is a liquor license violation on behalf of Evil Olive. There were two different incidences that the city became aware of. The owners of the Evil Olive were made aware of the fact that they broke our city code, and we obviously preferred they not do that. There was a second incident after that first warning, and that incident resulted in a violation. The letter that is within your packets was sent to Mr. Ploncheck, the owner, and they have since paid their, their fine, which was $500 for violating that ordinance. They now are basically in our system, and we will monitor them for a period of two years to make sure that there are no further violations. A second violation would result in a higher fine, a one-day suspension of their license, and a mandatory hearing in front of this body. If there's any questions, I'll entertain those now, and if not, I'll continue. The next item then is the former clubhouse property disposition. We have maintained a clubhouse property outside of our city limits. The golf course built and constructed a new clubhouse several years ago. This clubhouse has received interest periodically over the years, but, but disposition has not been made. We have two very serious lookers. People are, have expressed interest, and in order to dispose of this property properly, what I'd like to do is put it out for bids and allow all interested parties to submit their proposals, or submit their bids, and then improve them once we set a date and time. So if there's, if there's no concerns with that kind of a proper, or process to dispose of this, I would pursue that option.
Do we have an appraised value of the property?
We don't. The, the property's been a public facility for its, its entire existence, so it's never been appraised, so to speak. We do have one offer on the property. It is, the offer was made for a $0 transaction. Simply alleviating the expenses of, and maintenance costs makes that somewhat attractive, but since there are other offers, rather than award it to the contract proposal, I'd, I'd rather see us bid it out and, and get some financial remuneration.
You've involved the Park District in these conversations?
Yes. One of the things that we'll have to do is establish a parcel. It would have to be surveyed. That's not been done, and it's, it's something that we'd have to think long and hard about, since the Dickinson Dyke is right there, and access to their maintenance facilities would also have to be considered. No other questions, I'll go on to the...
Just, just a moment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are there any objections to the direction Mr. Kessel's laid out here?
As long as we're coordinating with the Park District, I think it's fine.
Okay, then I guess you can go ahead.
Thank you. The, the next item then is a continuation of the land sales update that I began at our last commission meeting. It does include two additional purchase agreements that have been entertained since the last commission meeting. It also provides you a map of all existing and remaining city-owned lots. Now, these, these lots are, are ones that are for sale and don't represent other properties that we own that are not for sale, such as this building that we occupy right now. You'll notice that the zoning for each of those land is, is on the list. We did, we do have a, a large parcel out by our existing Baylor Building, just on, just south of it. There's, there's around 50 acres or so. You'll notice that it is shaded green with some striping or shading in it. We have pulled that off of the for-sale list until we make a determination where our public works building will be constructed. That building is expected and hoped to be constructed in 2012, and using the existing site, or the site that's in the green thatching there, would be, we're looking for some guidance based on the architect's recommendation. So you can see that we have very little land that, that currently is, is available for sale, hence all of the discussions this evening of annexation. There's really not a lot of places for people to go any longer, and this does not include, of course, the 120 acres of land that the county has sold within our city limits as well, on the west side of our community. Any questions about the...
Mr. President? Mr. President, could you tell, tell me and maybe the public is how we determine the value of each of these lots?
There was a, a committee, I'll take a stab at it, these, these prices were done prior to, to my employ, but there was a committee established that had former Commissioner Frenzel, in his experience as a realtor, was on there along with a few others, and that committee is the one who set the prices for all of these lots. We contemplated not long ago reviewing those prices, but we've simply sold most of the lots since that time, and it hasn't been an issue, I guess.
Commissioner Lambum, I think, you know, what the commission and management struggled with years ago, with, do you price the lots low and sell them and, and kind of get them out of the, you know, expense of the city and get them back on the tax roll? Or, or are you supposed to try and maximize the price you could get for, for each lot? And I think we, we really kind of came down in the middle, that we didn't price them so low that they were... low that they were a giveaway, but I don't believe they were priced at, at a level that, you know, you were just squeezing every, every last dollar out, because there is benefit to the city to, to have them developed, have them, instead of being a cost to the city government, they become on the tax rolls, and you eliminate the cost of maintaining them. So, I don't know if there was a right or wrong answer, but I, I suspect we ended up kind of in between.
I think Mr. Kessel probably hit the nail on the head, though, when he said that maybe we should reevaluate them, but then, again, the number of parcels that have been sold have been significant, and probably not even worth the effort anymore.
Well, there's not much remaining there.
I will say that the, the parcels that are outlined in red are currently under contract, and the one that's on the south side there, it's a small number seven, almost is what it looks like. That is the parcel that we acquired after the tornado, where the Section 8 housing existed. We did sell that for exactly what we paid for that, so the transaction essentially was mute or, or even. But since that time, we've, we've not repriced any of the lots. Any other questions about the remaining lots we have for sale? If not, the next item then is a staffing update. I did mention earlier on in ordinance first reading that some positions are difficult for us to get quality applicants. The public works director position that we currently are advertising is, is one of those in terms of quantity. We simply did not get many applicants that met our criteria. We had, I think, six that actually did meet our criteria, six applicants, period. We are going through a process of, of interviewing those applicants, and we'll make a determination on whether or not we feel we can extend an offer of employment. If we don't feel comfortable extending an offer of employment, we may have to seek other methods of filling that position, which may mean looking at the current org structure, how those duties are differentiated, and, and who, who does what. So, we'll keep you up to date on that process and ask for your permission as we move forward. The next item is the planner position. We did receive many more applicants, around two dozen applicants for that position. Again, the, the issue here wasn't quantity, but it, it may be, be quality, and I, I am hesitant to say that, since we have some good applicants, and we're going through an interview process, but again, we hope to find somebody who will meet our standards and that we can offer employee to. And the last position is code enforcement. Again, an issue of, of both quantity and quality. We did not get very many applicants for this position. Again, we hope to seek, to, to find somebody who we can extend an offer to. I really believe that adding that, those last two positions will help especially our engineer Soren in, in the many job duties that he's required to do at this time, so. If there's any questions, I'll, I'll entertain those. Not, we'll move on to number five, city attorney contract update. As part of our, our budget process, we discussed the multitude of, of options that we have in providing city attorney services. We currently engage Evil Top Siclar in, as our city attorney. Mr. Kohling does most of our work on behalf of Evil Top Siclar. The, we are currently negotiating that contract. There is a, a request for an increase in, in fees. We did budget for an increase in the 2011 budget, and we are just trying to determine, come, come to some middle ground. Just wanted to keep you abreast of, of those negotiations as they continue. The next item is the 2010 Friend of Transit Award for North Dakota. Colleen Radikowski, the executive director for elder care, has submitted the City of Dickinson as a nomination for the Friend of Transit Award in North Dakota, and I'm happy to say that she was successful in that application and that the City of Dickinson was awarded the 2010 Friend of Transit Award. I have included her letter of application on behalf of the City of Dickinson for that award, and they will be handing that out at their ensuing conference. I believe it occurs in about a month's time. So, it's not a financial award, it's simply a pat on the back and, and maybe a, a little trophy for a trophy case, I think. But the recognition says a lot in, in terms of their appreciation for what the City of Dickinson has done to assist elder care in their growth and the taking over of the on-demand or taxi services. The next item then is a series of thank-yous. These have come because of our Southwest Regional Grant Program and are, are there for, for you to read and review. The next item is the Family Emergency Hardship Assistance Program, and this is related to the ongoing issue of homelessness in, in Dickinson. The city recently closed on the two properties that the commission agreed to purchase. We intend to use one of those properties, the one closest to the city hall, for a homeless shelter operated, at least initially, by domestic violence, and then the other, we would retain for, for the potential for having staff housing as we move through the retiring processes. There may be an issue, or there is an, an issue regarding handicap accessibility. One of the things that the homeless shelter would have to do is comply with ADA or Americans with Disability Act standards. Through Roosevelt-Custer Regional Council, you, you see the grant application that, that I made on August 20th. They, I have been informed that we were successful in obtaining $8,000 in a matching grant. It's a 75-25 grant, and there are some other stipulations. For instance, I think we have four months to complete the, the work, but I'm happy to say that we'll, we'll be able to renovate that facility, make it handicap accessibility, or handicap accessible at a much lower cost than we originally anticipated. The next item I was going to present on, which have already been taken care of, was on the planning grant side, and we've, we've covered that in earlier discussions, so I won't go in on any further now. So, if there's any questions you have for me on any of the items on my report, I'll be happy to answer.
Any, any comments or questions for the city administrator? All right, thank you. We'll move to item nine, accounts payable and payroll. Are there any of the payables or payroll you wish to discuss or have questions about? Not, would there be a motion to approve them?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Are there any reports or comments by city commissioners?
Mr. President?
Mr. Lambloom.
Not to drag out the rest of the night, but I just, as a side note to all the things that are taking place these days, I just wondered if it wouldn't be wise or beneficial to us as a city commission to hold a, a retreat, an informal retreat, to discuss, you know, maybe half a dozen, seven issues that are, are facing us. Obviously, the media and the public would be notified and, and encouraged to attend, but I just wondered if it wouldn't behoove us, there we go, to have a retreat in the very near future to discuss some of these major issues that are facing us rather than at a formal commission meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lambloom. Any, any other comments? Okay. How about from the public? Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. No one from the public, then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.